The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the place of allegiance, and this evening, the place of allegiance will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, we look towards your example of strength as we set out to lead our community. May we always be reminded of not only your strength, but your wisdom, and may we learn through your example in all that we do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Blackshear, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, now a motion then to approve the minutes from the October 9th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the October 9th meeting. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Okay. Commissioner Blackshear, do we have any presentations?
No communications or opportunities.
Okay, so we do have two presentations this evening. So first, I'd like to call up Ms. Felicia Graham and Theresa McGrady from the Department of Water to the podium.
That was canceled.
It was canceled? Okay. Okay, that was canceled?
Yep, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on then. So we do have another presentation then, and I'd like to call Ms. Hillary Browning, Physical Officer and Finance Director, and Rachel, I think it's Rachel Gutt, Deputy Director of the Dayton Metro Library, to give an update as far as the upcoming library levy.
Good evening.
Good evening, and happy birthday, I understand, too. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Mims, Commissioners, and City Manager for having us today. As you said, my name is Hillary Browning, and I'm the CFO and the Director of Finance for the Dayton Metro Library. It's wonderful to be back. And as per usual, I can't use the technology. Nothing has changed since I left. Inability to advance the PowerPoint remains a consistent. So what do we do at DML? For over 135 years, DML has been a pillar of Montgomery County and indeed a pillar of Dayton. You may know our historic EC Doran Branch is one of our very first branches. We've been serving the Dayton community for over 100 years. We offer innovative programs for childrens, teens, and students of all ages. We have a robust physical and digital collection. In fact, it was estimated that we have the 11th largest physical collection in the United States. That was estimated in 2019. We have state-of-art technology, including public desktop computers, wireless hotspots, and streaming services, and we offer critical resources and services through our Bookmobile and outreach initiatives. You may not know, but if you are homebound, you can order a book through Dayton Metro Library's website, and it can be delivered to your home. We are building a bold new future, and we want to continue to inform, inspire, and empower our community for the years to come. In 2023, we had more than 9,400 programs for children and teens. More than 70,000 children are cardholders at Dayton Metro Library. We had nearly 200,000 participants, and over 900,000 physical items and 1 million additional items were available for download. Loanable laptops were borrowed more than 300,000 times in 2023, and over 7 million items, both physical and digital, were checked out in 2023, our most ever. We offer and serve a diverse collection of communities, including the city of Dayton. And of Montgomery County, we service about 85% of the total population. In Dayton, we have six beautiful branches. Our Burkhardt Branch is located on Burkhardt Avenue. We also have our historic Electric SE Doran Branch in the old North Dayton neighborhood. Our main branch, just a few blocks from here, at 215 East Third Street. Our Northwest Branch on Philadelphia Drive. Our Southeast Branch on Waterfleet. And our West Branch at the Wright Factory site on 300 Abbey Avenue. In September of this year, there were 734,000 patron visits to DML branches just in Dayton alone. Circulation of our physical books in Dayton, almost 500,000. And in the month of September, 936 new patrons signed up in our Dayton branches alone to get their first library cards. Burkhardt Northwest, Southeast, and West hosted 676 homework help sessions so far this school year, with thousands more to go. When we talk about Dayton Metro Library, you may be aware that we have a levy on the ballot this year for consideration, and one of the reasons why is because Dayton Metro Library is unfortunately operating in deficit. Our revenues are estimated to be $33.4 million this year, and one of our largest sources of income is actually the State of Ohio Public Library Fund. The Public Library Fund is 1.7% of general fund revenues for the State of Ohio, and it is shared with libraries throughout the state. But unfortunately, our expenses are $39.9 million this year, making our deficit at least $5.5 million, use of cash reserve. Our operating deficit is a common a great cost to our operations, with us having to cut more than $2.6 million in budget this year. Unfortunately, our revenues have not kept pace with inflation, as you can imagine, we are a great buyer of books, of physical things, of goods. Inflation is very high in this space, and even after our cuts, as I mentioned, our deficit is $5.5 million. Due to our ongoing deficit, we are asking voters for a 1 mil five-year levy on the ballot, and this will support our general fund operations. Absent new revenues, we will have to cut $7 million in January of 2025 to sustain our operations and ensure that we do not dip below our cash reserves. We recognize our current economic constraints, which is why we are only asking for a tiny ask. We appreciate the support of the Dayton City Commission, of Dayton residents who are patrons and members of the business community for their support. We are committed to providing the level of support that the community expects from us, and again, we just emphasize that we have a levy on the ballot to support, and we thank everyone for having us here today.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Comments? Commissioner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Browning, and happy birthday. Thank you for being before us this evening. Please give our best to Mr. Trezak. Just one question for you. If you could just explain what the roundabout number would be for the 1 mil additional tax levy that equals out to the dollar amount per household, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, sure. It is about 67 cents per week, per $100,000 of valuation.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fairchild.
Well, I would just say that the library's been a pillar of my life for over 50 years, and I can still remember making trips over to the Belmont Branch with Mr. Zell, who was the librarian there and was just a pillar of the community. I think every kid in Belmont knew Mr. Zell. And so I just want to say that we value the library. I've valued it in my own life, in my daughter's life, as a family currently, and that I'd be glad to support this levy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Shaw?
Absolutely supporting, and signs up already in my house, and I'm a business, so yeah, let's do this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Thanks for being here. Welcome back. Of course, I wholeheartedly support it, just like my colleagues have said. We appreciate everything you do for our residents, even folks who aren't our residents. You do an awful lot at the library, and we really appreciate that. So I fully support this.
Okay, good. I support the library levy in 2012, which helped to build all the libraries that we have in the area. So you've exceeded the expectations of this community. So thank you so much, and I will be supporting it again. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so Ms. Blackshear, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixie, any deletions, comments, or additions to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. I do have a few items I'd like to highlight. Item number two, which is a service agreement with County Corp., is a grant agreement for $300,000 to construct 27 new affordable single-family homes in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. Now, what's really exciting about this is that these homes are going to be built on sites that we previously demolished, blighted structures through the NIP program, if you recall, around 2014 or so. And so this will be great to be able to bring this reinvestment back into Wolf Creek with quality rental housing units, of course, as affordable rents. They will be required to be affordable rents for the next 30 years, so that's also great. And, you know, they're being constructed by a great partner of ours, County Corp., and they will be four-bedroom, two-bath, with two-car garages and front porches. So it'll be a great investment for the neighborhood. So we're really excited to bring this, and this is being brought to you by the Dayton Recovery Plan. So we're excited about this investment. Item number three is a grant agreement with St. Vincent de Paul. This is our annual ESG, Emergency Shelter Grant funding, that we provide to St. Vincent de Paul for the shelters that they manage in the city of Dayton. And then finally, item number four, which is an emergency resolution number 6831-24, is authorizing Wright Dunbar, Inc. to erect a memorial for Medal of Honor recipients in Friendship Park, which is a park that sits at Enwood C. Moses and Third Street. It serves as a gateway to Wright Dunbar. Very excited to support and participate in this effort because it will, first of all, revitalize the World War I memorials that were placed in the very early 90s in the park, and the Gold Star Mother's Memorial. And the centerpiece of this effort will be the Medal of Honor Memorial. But I don't want to go into any more detail because I know that Carla Garrett-Harschaw, who has, you know, led this effort with a lot of love and sweat and maybe some tears along the way, and Merle Wilberdine, who also supported, will be speaking later to come about the project, so.
Okay, thank you. So Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
Yes, Your Honor. Three citizens have registered to speak. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience and attendance, please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Carla Garrett-Harschaw.
Good evening. This is an exciting time for us because we've been working so hard, as you mentioned.
Your name and address for the record.
Carla Garrett-Harschaw, I'm sorry.
Good evening back. Good evening back to you as well.
Thank you. Again, it is exciting time for us. We really appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you and that you're considering the proposal before you. I want to thank the mayor for very early on supporting this project, and Shelley Dixie for having such a sway in helping us to get funding. We really appreciate the support you've had so far. This project will elevate the memorial of veterans in this community, but also of veterans who still live here. The Medal of Honor Memorial will celebrate 41 people from the greater Dayton area who received the Medal of Honor, which is the highest award given for valor in combat by the U.S. That's a significant number of people, most of whom lost their lives in the process of helping our country to stay safe and to protect our democracy. As Shelley mentioned, it will be the centerpiece of that park. We hope to have a groundbreaking on November 7th at 2 o'clock. Hope you will intend. In addition to that, this will be a way of, as the mayor indicated at one point, helping to bridge the gap between downtown and Wright Dunbar Historic District. That's one that needs to be mended. Already, we're having a lot of success on redeveloping Wright Dunbar, where the Wright brothers invented flight, and where the poetry of Paul Lawrence Dunbar was printed, and his home still is located in the district. Having more people come to the park for this reason, whether just to see the site, to learn more about people who are inducted there, because there will be an educational component online, or to do research, will help to bring more people into the district, perhaps stimulating economic development, too. So we're hoping there'll be that benefit as well. We're also very pleased to have our campaign as a component fund of the Dayton Foundation that has been very supportive and is also a donor. In fact, we're very pleased to announce that we raised more than $1.3 million of a $1.5 million campaign, including, I might add, a $50,000 anonymous donation that just came in.
Okay.
So we hope you'll support us, and thank you very much for the support you've already given.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Merle Wilberdine. I'm a resident of the city at 1013 Rubicon Road and living in the city for over, oh gosh, 25 years now. So proud to be a resident. I'm also proud to be a part of this organization and this proposal, in part because I'm a veteran. I served in the Army during the Vietnam War, and I have a real appreciation for those who served in all the wars, and the Medal of Honor winners, of course, are the most well-respected, and they deserve our respect. And I enjoyed the opportunity to work with this program, work with the support of the city, work with the support of the city here, city there, and the Dayton Foundation. It's been a great opportunity for us. I would also add that I'm an attorney with the Coolidge Wall Firm, and we were happy to contribute our services to this for free. This is an important civic obligation that we feel that we wanted to be a part of. So thank you for your consideration, and we hope you approve it.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Rachel Gutt?
Hi, my name is Rachel Gutt. My address is 302 Aberdeen Avenue, and I am just here tonight. I'm actually here on behalf of Citizens for Good Libraries, although, as you mentioned earlier, I do happen to also work for the library. I just wanted to say thank you very much, first of all, for allowing us to present this evening. Second of all, for seriously considering your strong support for issue 34, the library's levy. If anyone has any questions about that or would like some further information, you can find that on the levy website, which is www.votefordml.org. And if anyone needs a yard sign or anything else fun like that, we'd be happy to hook you up there as well. But mostly, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening and for your support.
Okay, thank you for being here.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay, so Commissioners, any comments on the city manager's recommendations? Commissioner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for highlighting calendar items two, three, and four, and I look forward to supporting them. The only thing that I would like to add is just providing a little level of clarification for the service agreement, the County Corp. Grant Agreement, calendar item number two. From my understanding, the $300,000 that will be used for the fixtures and some of the other materials, the construction materials, not to construct actually the 27 new homes, although we wish it was at that dollar amount.
Right, it is for construction materials, housing fixtures, and professional services.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Is it? Okay. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, so I know on the agenda, we have the naming of the street over there by Corinthian for Dr. Henderson. And I spoke last week about the evening with him on election night in 2008. A colleague of mine was there that day, and she's a poet, and she captured that night in poem, and I thought I'd share that.
Okay.
Faces, Election Night. That's the title. Sketch them urgently, the faces that will preserve the night in memory, resist history's narrow lens, and paint them all in vivid chestnut and almond and ginger brown, like in those Italian frescoes, where the local villagers' faces appear in great crowds among princes and saints. First, the young ones. Sancho, standing in the crowd in Dayton, channeling an Egyptian princess with her braids and hoop earrings, naming the people she carried out to vote. Zakira, sure that those high school students who hit the Kroger with her at 6:00 PM had drummed up dozens of last-minute voters before the polls closed. Now Gwen squealing elation rings out, announcing that Lottie's taking a group of youngsters to visit the Lincoln Memorial back home tonight to honor the dream. Pastor Henderson's here, who preached on Sunday that even the stones would cry out if the unwanted crowds that once streamed into gruesome streets to greet Jesus and now to vote were silenced. Tonight, he stands, arms crossed like the king statue in granite, just beaming in the back of the room, letting others cheer the blue tide they helped to splash across Ohio's profile on the map. And yes, those faces in Grant Park, too, the elders with eyes beaming, and the checkerboard of young faces unmatched except for the uplifted chins. Even the famous faces are raised, planted like flags of victory among the televised throngs. Finally, the candidate's face, confident as always, but this time it's the resolve that dominates, chiseled in his pursed lips, brow focused and firm, in this moment, remembering not the T-shirt icon, heroic profile, but a carved mask, part Kenyan warrior, part hip-hop kid, also Kansas exile, but with the soft eyes of a new father, varying.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just very briefly, just back to the number two of the County Corp. Agreement for Wolf Creek. Appreciate that leverage investment that we're able to put forward, and the 25% minority business enterprise aspirational goal. So that does a lot for this community, helps businesses scale up, and I'm just glad that we're doing it. I hope we continue to do so. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Just one thing. I want to thank the administration for their continuing dedication to trying to end chronic homelessness in the city. This has been going on for 15 years, 18 years, this effort. We have never shied away from the commitment, both in staff time and dollars. This number three, item number three today is just yet another step, an annual step that we take to try to house those that need it. So thank you very much for your commitment. Thank you to my colleagues for the continuing support.
Okay. And I know you have to leave here shortly for a special event. Would you like to share that event?
Oh, I don't know. You might be embarrassed. My son's getting an award at school, so I'm going to leave here in about 15 minutes. I don't want to miss that, but thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Hall of Fame Award?
No.
Okay.
He'd be embarrassed.
Okay, tell him I did it, okay? Okay, so at this point, I would like to have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations.
I move to approve the city manager's recommendations.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Okay, thank you. Let's slate it, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6831-24, authorizing Wright Dunbar, Inc. to erect a memorial for Medal of Honor recipients and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution number 6831-24.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded to declare a resolution number 6831-24 as an emergency. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. Okay.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6831-24, authorizing Wright Dunbar, Inc. to erect a memorial for Medal of Honor recipients. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading, ordinance number 32119-24, authorizing a technical amendment to ordinance number 32067-23, repealing portions of ordinance number 31514-16 in order to terminate the Southwest Community Reinvestment Area, repealing portions of ordinance number 31515-16 in order to terminate the Inner West Community Reinvestment Area, and establishing and describing the boundaries of the West Community Reinvestment Area in the city of Dayton. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner Sloss?
Aye.
First reading, resolution number 6832-24, declaring the intention of the commission to vacate the alley east of the Dayton-Kettering Connector from the North property line of parcel R 72139030015 to Schuyer Road. Second reading, resolution number 6830-24, honorarily naming Gold Street between James H. McGee Boulevard and Delores Street as Reverend Dr. P.E. Henderson Jr. Way. Mayor Mims?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner Sloss?
Aye.
Informal resolution number 1013-24, expressing strong support for issue 34, which, if passed, would provide necessary funding for daily operations of our Dayton Metro Library system.
Your Honor, I move for the immediate passage of informal resolution number 1013-24.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to have resolution number 1013-24. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Yes, Your Honor. Three more citizens have registered, and I would like to remind everyone of our three-minute time limit. I call to the podium Kevin Keller.
Good evening. Is this someone's, or is this sit here?
Name and address for the record.
Kevin J. Keller, 3922 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and citizens. I come to you this evening talking about an opportunity for the city of Dayton to really shine through an art project that I've envisioned, and I got great support from our art meeting that meets every Tuesday at Gather. There's a really bunch great of artists that think something like this could really work if we get community and city involvement. What it is, is the fact that Dayton, city of Dayton, is named for a gem, right? The Gem City. I thought we'd take that one step further and create something similar to the example that you have on your desk of Cincinnati did pigs, Louisville did horses, Buffalo did bulls, or Buffalos, Chicago did bulls, and Dayton is the Gem City. So my idea was to get these big fiberglass gems, you know, similar to a piece of jewelry, and it was similar to the one that was on the Dayton Metro Library graphic there. And the gems would be a good size. People could climb on them. People could do whatever, like the baseball's out at Dragon Stadium. And I think it would be a great idea because it would signify Dayton as a gem, Gem City. And we could have local artists decorate them and be sponsored by local businesses. For instance, you could have one in front of the arcade, symbolizing the arcade's history in Dayton. You could have one outside Dayton's Dragons Field, which is now Daer Ballpark. Daer could do some advertising. There could be two, one for the Dragons and then another one for, you know, the sponsor of the stadium. I think that this could be a reality, and I have a diorama I'm working on, which I was hoping to bring tonight. It's not ready, so I'm going to bring it to the next commission meeting to show an idea of how this could be. They would be fixtures, like on the sidewalk, and people could enjoy them. And also, Fairborn has F-16s on their lamp posts. And if anybody's been to Fairborn, you can actually see on the you can actually see on the aircraft themselves, and they're about this size, and you can actually see local artists have created, but also local businesses have supported. They're advertising on some of these planes, and some of them are just decorated really awesome. So, you can get on that website that, for instance, if you want to see more, there's a website I went to, Pigs in Cincinnati, and it gives an idea of what they did back in 2000 and 2012 as far as decorating pigs around the city, and it really brought a lot of people downtown and it created kind of a scavenger hunt for seeing how many they could find. And I think Dayton could really profit from this, as well as putting restrooms downtown too, some public restrooms, and that's going to be on my diorama as well. Two things that are very important, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Good evening, Yusuf Alzain, 4906 Amberwood Drive, Dayton, Ohio. I like this paragraph, so I want to keep reading it until I read to you what my niece sent me. Again, genocide and the suffering it caused can be difficult to comprehend. It's a tragic reminder of humanity's capacity for both cruelty and resilience. Sometimes just acknowledging that sorrow and discussing it can be a step toward healing and understanding. So, here's what my niece, Dima, wrote me back about two weeks ago when the bombardment of Beirut started. From the moment we were born, and she's in her 40s, she was actually celebrating her birthday, from the moment we were born, war has been a reality. Being Lebanese means distinguishing the sounds of an explosion from the roar of fighter jets, from the crackle of fireworks, from the breaking of the sound barriers. Being Lebanese means understanding the brutality of physical wars, the weight of mental wars, and the scars of psychological wars. We have learned to resist, to rebuild, and to grow, but today, we are tired, we are angry, we no longer want to be resilient. Let the Lebanese people live the life they came on this earth to live. Do not normalize the Lebanese suffering. The same thing goes to the Palestinians. Despite our strength, we are not okay, and we should not be okay. Do not normalize forced displacement, war crimes, and human rights violations. Today, we are Lebanese, we are victims of injustice, dirty politics, terrorism, racism, and impunity. Until when, she ends that. So, this is my niece. She was born 40 years ago almost, and didn't have a year to help, and now she has a two-year-old that is going through the same things as she did. So, let me read you a poet that one from Gaza wrote that is titled, "Please Forget About Us." Please forget about us, forget our names, our freedom to exist. The blood stain on your screens, the screams under your pillows, the echo of our hunger, our bodies buried in rubble. The blood that pools in our streets, its scent lingering. Forget whether we resemble each other or not, whether we speak the same language or not, whether our children are similar age or not, whether we sleep or you cannot, whether we dream or you do not, simply forget us. Whether it is better to perish in the summer or early sorrows of the winter or delayed defeats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sloss.
Thank you for your comments.
Annette Gibson Strong?
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Annette Gibson Strong. I live at 437 Hopeland, Dayton, Ohio, 45417. I have a problem. I've cleaned out the neighborhood with the homeless and the tents and all of this, now here comes the neighbor that's got a piece of property that's out my back door where my four dogs are. They got to bark on Thursday. They have moved two of these campers in, no license, no nothing, on his property, and they have six meth heads living in one. They got a fire pit that's been burning the grass. Fireman came, told them they had to put rocks around it, they got rocks around it. They got six and seven chairs around the fire, then they got stuff over here, like they got their living room. I got pictures, there's trash everywhere. I have pictures of it all. Called the landlord. Since last Thursday, he supposed to came and moved them off. That has not happened. We've called him Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I even called him Sunday. I'm going to get them off, and I thought they was gone off. He allowed them. It came to my attention, these are meth heads, straight meth heads. I got pictures of the dope man's trucks and cars going in and out, taking them the drugs, but it's six of them. When I said police, six of them ran out the camper, two white women and four white men. I got rid of them that night. They came back, they told the police that the man said they could stay there. There's no camper, I mean, it's a property behind my house, the one that I've had the problem with. Now there's a camper. It's been sold to somebody else now. He's put a camper, two campers, and he's got it just full of meth heads. My dogs are going crazy. I can't sleep at night because of my dogs. My dogs is barking because they're not used to that. They out there all night long. The dope man, the cars, I got the numbers and license plates on it, and I showed them to Commissioner Turner-Sloss of them that's coming there, and he just put them there. No license on the truck, no nothing, just put them on his property, and that's where they at. It's causing a problem. Now, our cars have just start being broken in since they put them back there. They just went in a man's truck and popped the lock on the bottom, but he took his stuff in the house. Like I said, my dogs can't rest. They can't rest. I'm up all night long. Since last Thursday, I have not had a full night's sleep at all because of the disturbance they back here. My dogs is barking, where they back there partying like they just lived there, and nobody's doing nothing about it. And I've called the landlord, and he told me they was gone. That was last Thursday. Tomorrow, Thursday's again. I mean, and it's terrible out there. That brings down the value of my house with all this trash and all this little stuff out here. But they're all meth heads.
Thank you for your comments, and we have another conversation with you after the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson Shaw. That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. So, Ms. Nixon, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Garrett Harshaw and Mr. Merle Werbendinger? Probably missed it, but close enough, right? Nonetheless, I really appreciate you both being here this evening, and I look forward to the groundbreaking on November 7th, right in time for Veterans Day. So, again, congratulations to you and to the entire team that worked on this effort. And you're absolutely correct, Ms. Garrett Harshaw, there is a lot of excitement, a lot of development that is taking place in not only Wright Dunbar, but as well as in Wright, excuse me, in Wolf Creek. So, again, thank you both for being here. Ms. Gutt, Rachel Gutt, thank you for being here as well. Look forward to supporting Issue 34. Mr. Keller, thank you for your idea. I really appreciate you bringing that forward, and perhaps we can revisit that, my colleagues and I, as well as with the city administration. Mr. Alzain, thank you. We will not forget, and those atrocities are not normalized. So, thank you for your continued leadership. Ms. Gibson Strong, thank you for bringing here this evening and bringing that to our attention, and we'll get the information. I believe we actually went over to that area some time ago when we did a neighborhood tour, so we'll get the additional information from you so that we could address those concerns.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Thank you for the citizens who've come out and to share their concerns. I just want to encourage everyone that early voting has already begun, so you can go out and vote now. If you're not voting tomorrow, make your plan. The best way to make sure you get your vote in is that you have a plan, and you do that, and we encourage you to vote for our library levy and our parks levy, and make sure you get your vote in.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just very briefly, I just wanted to thank the folks at Habitat for Humanity and the Flyer Nation Builders for building the first home to be built in 80 years. I cannot believe it when they told me that, and have now made three family members homeowners. So, the mayor was there, I think you were there too, Commissioner Turner-Sloss. It was wonderful, so I just wanted to bring that to our attention, and I hope that they keep it up.
Yeah, and that was the Jackson family.
Jackson family.
And, yeah, they were very excited about having a new home, and I think they've already purchased another property to start on the second home.
Well, they're going to be doing four.
Yeah, four, okay. Yeah, good. So, I just have a few things I want to share. First of all, Mr. Werbending and Carla, I always have this thought, Carla, I remember you, you were a cheerleader at Jefferson Township back in the day, I just couldn't resist saying that. Also, to thank you so much for the work that you've done relative to that Hall of Fame area. The Medal of Honor winner that I met some years ago, I had the honor to present him an proclamation from the city at Wright-Parrishan Air Force Base, first class, Sergeant First Class, I'm sorry, Melvin Morris. Mel Morris, the thing, he had four tours in Vietnam, and he was a gentleman that was still full of energy every time you saw him and talked to him. So, again, I had the honor of presenting an proclamation to him some years ago. But we really appreciate your hard work on that from the very beginning, and look forward to its finishing as far as the whole city is concerned, to have something that bridges, you know, again, as we mentioned, that gap between the city of Dayton and Wright Dunbar and the rest of the west side, if you will. So, again, thank you for that work. I also want to thank my staff for the hard work this past Thursday on assisting with the 15th Annual Teen Voting March. Very, very excited in having 300 young people downtown with zero problems. Some of them, I think they had too much to eat, but other than that, they were fine. They did not complain about that. But the aspect of having all of the Dayton Public Schools, including Mountain Street Academy, as well as Horizon Academy, as well as Trotwood, and also having the bands from Trotwood, Dunbar, and Belmont. I think 80 young people in the band from Belmont, 60 from Trotwood, and 40 from Dunbar. And it's so amazing because four years ago, another Dayton Public Schools had a band more than five members or six members, and the seed of transformation. And also have those bands, had like a battle of the bands while the young people were inside voting, and so it was very special as far as that whole process was concerned as well. And for those sometimes who wonder still, how do the kids vote? We don't know. Okay, we told them the voting issues that benefit them, their livelihood, their family, and their community, and so I'm thinking most of them certainly followed that direction. But I also want to thank some others who were involved, because not only did Belmont have the bands there, they also had their ROTC group, as well as Melodyale's ROTC organization, as well as the Board of Elections for their hard work in terms of helping support us, the League of Women Voters, their work as well, the Divine Nine, N W A C P, and of course, the major sponsor organization is Montgomery County Black elected officials. Again, have been doing this for 15 years alone with the initiation from Mr. Al Freeman and Mr. John R. Smith. So, a very, very exciting time with young people, and I understand that some people have received almost a million hits for the films that were shared with the young people going in and voting for the first time in their lives. And again, many of them with their parents and other adults who support the march as well.
Pensau-Masons.
Yeah, Pensau-Masons, yeah, we have them as well. So, thank you so much, you know, with Mason being involved in that process. The recommendation, Mr. Keller, I think the Downtown Dayton Partnership has been working for some time, and we have some, I think, electrical boxes that are painted in a very decorative color around the city. You may make this presentation to them and let them see what they would like to do as far as that process is concerned, and certainly follow that. And I think with that, no further business to come before this commission. I'd like to say love and peace for all and hatred for none. This meeting is adjourned.
Very good.